22, 2021, Introduction Posting of Notice. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice at the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on December 18, 2020, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and the New York Star Over Ledger on December 22, 2020, and was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers on December 18, 2020. No, council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cablevision Public Access Channel 21 at 11:00 a.m. on Sundays and are also available for viewing at www.parcipity.net. At this time, I turn it over to the Mayor to lead us in the flax suit.
Thank you, Clerk. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and go into roll call. Mr. Creffy?
Here.
Ms. Grignani?
Here.
Ms. McCarthy?
Here.
Ms. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. DePiero?
Here.
Okay, also present are Mayor Michael Soriano, Business Administrator Fred Carr, CFO Juan Uribe. We also have Joe Beckmeyer, Superintendent Assuer, and Betsy McBride. At this time, we have a quorum. Council President, may I begin, please?
Please do.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, February 16, 2021, at 7:00 p.m., which is the regular meeting; March 2, 2021, at 7:00 p.m., which is the agenda meeting. There are no minutes at this time. Going on to presentations and reports, turn it over to the Mayor.
Thank you, Clerk. Let me start with an update first before I introduce my guest. As of noon today, the snowpack in Parsippany is estimated at around two feet. Depends on which side of town you are, it's plus or minus. Tonight, we're supposed to get about another inch, inch and a half of new snow with variable pavement covering. There's a chance for patchy ice, so continue to use caution when moving around tonight and into Wednesday morning, okay? Black ice, you gotta look out for it. Tonight's low is gonna be between 24 and 28 degrees. The wind chill will make it up closer to 15 degrees. There's a chance to 10 to 20 mile per hour winds with gusts up to 30 miles per hour. Now, keep in mind, Parsippany has 400 road miles, okay? Crews have been plowing and clearing our roads since Monday morning at 5:00 a.m., almost nonstop, okay? Special thanks to Public Works, Parks and Forestry, Engineering, and the Water and Sewer Department, as well as Fire Prevention, for their assistance in helping remove the snow. Now, remember to everyone listening here to keep your cars parked off the roads as crews continue to clear snow and widen streets. Any cars parked on roadways will be ticketed and may be towed, okay? Sidewalks and fire hydrants and handicap parking areas need to be cleared within 24 hours after the storm. A good rule is to clear three feet in all directions around a hydrant so firefighters can access it quickly. Make sure you clear snow off your driveway, off your car before driving, okay? You can get a ticket for that. If not, sometimes the police will just stop you and make you do it right there, okay? Please do wellness checks on your friends and neighbors and your family members that are seniors and people with disabilities in your neighborhood. This winter weather is a challenge for everyone, but it's especially hard on our vulnerable residents. So also, special thanks to Police Department, our dispatchers, Office of Emergency Management, and our volunteer and paid fire and EMS squads for being on call and keeping us safe through this winter weather. Garbage and recycling were suspended yesterday and today, but DPW will be out Wednesday morning trying to catch up. Township hasn't experienced this kind of snow in years. The last time we had something like this was March of 2018, if you recall, except we had about, at peak, we had 70% of the town without power. So at least in this storm, we didn't lose power at any point. It wasn't a wet snow, it was a very dry one, which is why trees weren't taken down as much and branches. OEM stats, just so you know. We had six car crashes in the township, 20 disabled vehicles, one structural fire, by the way, people having an open flame indoors, and 22 total EMS incidents. Town Hall Municipal Operations will recommence Wednesday morning, February 3. This includes zoning, construction, garbage, recycling and sanitation, recycling center, community shuttle bus, community center, food pantry, Health Department and Municipal Court. Now, speaking of the Health Department, the COVID cases in Parsippany as of yesterday, the total number of COVID-19 cases in Parsippany stands at 2,906. This marks an increase of 181 new cases in the past week. Also, regarding COVID, Monday, we were intended to open a state-run and township-supported COVID testing center at the Knoll East Golf Club. This testing center will open tomorrow, beginning at noon. On normal days, which would be Monday, Tuesday, Thursdays and Fridays, it'll operate, I believe it's between 9 and 4. Residents and those working in the township are encouraged to make appointments by calling the Parsippany Health Department at 973-263-7160. I'll say that one more time. Also, keep in mind, walk-in appointments are also available. So, thank you very much. Are there any questions from the council before I move on to the presentation?
Mayor, just one. I got a couple of phone calls asking me, tomorrow's Wednesday, what do they put out, garbage or recycling?
Yes.
It's confusing now. Now, I'm in District 3, normally on Wednesday, we put out recyclables. But is that, is that what we should be doing tomorrow?
Yes, you should be doing that tomorrow.
So we're just gonna skip whatever was supposed to be Monday and Tuesday and just...
You could, right, wait, you can also put out your garbage tomorrow, too. There's, it's still gonna be a shuffle for them tomorrow, but you should be able to put out your regular trash as well.
That's what I'll tell the people, then.
Okay, good enough, thank you, Michael.
So can I just ask if that's all districts or is that just districts that are scheduled for tomorrow? I mean, you know, I mean, you're District 3 and I don't know the other districts.
I assume the answer was all districts, because now we have six districts. Whatever Wednesday was scheduled, but that's...
They're gonna try, look, from my conversation with Greg, they're gonna try to catch up. So put your garbage out, even if you got skipped Monday, Tuesday, okay? They may not get to Wednesday's garbage until Thursday. It all depends on how it works out for them tomorrow morning.
There's a clear explanation on the town Facebook page of what
Yes, there is.
what zone or what section should put out their trash and recycling when, it was very clear.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'll just refer them to that.
There you go. Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Clerk. Now, I'd like to, I'd like to present Betsy McBride. She's from Solar Landscape, and she wants to talk about building a community solar garden here in Parsippany. Betsy, the floor is yours. You're on mute, Betsy.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
So everybody can hear me, right? All right, good. So I'm gonna share my screen. My name is Betsy McBride. Thank you, Mayor, for the introduction. And earlier this month, I was able to do a presentation for Mayor and he encouraged me to come to this meeting to share the presentation with all of you. So that's what we're going to do. Okay, can you see this okay? Okay, good. I have a little box on the side of my screen for the council members, so sometimes it gets in the way of my words, but I think I know it pretty well. This is an overview of the statewide program. It is a part of the Energy Master Plan that came about by the Governor deciding that we really needed to be having a goal of being energy, wait, fossil fuel energy, no more reliance by 2050. I'm sorry, I stumbled on that. So this is the Board of Public Utilities' Three-Year Pilot Program. It's not anything like any other solar program you've ever experienced. So we will go through this and you'll understand more. We are now in the second year of the Three-Year Pilot. So I'll briefly go over how it works, where Solar Landscape is in the process, the proposed project and community benefits of the Parsippany Troy Hills project, and in summary, we'll go over any questions you may have. So this is a very easy graph to show you how it works. I hope that you can all see it all right. But what we are going to be doing is putting panels, a solar garden on the rooftop of a commercial property, and that will be the source of the power. The building down below does not need the power to operate, and so we will be leasing the space on top of the roof from the property owner. We will then send the power that's generated to the utility. The utility needs to retire the same amount of power to the grid that is being brought in from a clean energy source. So their dirty, dirty energy production has to be reduced commensurate to the amount that we're bringing in. Then it will be sold at a discount to the customers. In Parsippany Troy Hills and in all of our second round projects, the guaranteed savings for your residents is 20% off of their electric bill. They would choose the, they would direct their utility to source the electricity from the local clean energy program, and that would be the indicator for your utility company to cease creating that energy, that electricity in the way they were before. There we go. So it is a brand-new state initiative, and it is about justice because it is creating an opportunity for everyone in our state to be able to participate in the economic and environmental benefits of solar energy without putting panels on their rooftops. Okay, this is where my little picture, there we go. 51% of the electricity generated must be sold to low and moderate income families. It's a guaranteed discount of 20% every year on the electricity for the life of the program, which is 20 years. The residents would enroll online. It's not an opt-in, opt-out program. They enroll if they choose to. There's no long-term fees or contracts, no hidden fees, and it's a very easy application. And in order to, to work with residents to help us subscribe low and moderate income families, we would be working with local nonprofits in Parsippany Troy Hills or surrounds who would be the trusting conduit for us, between us and the residents. So many times, it's a housing, housing authority or perhaps a food bank. Food distribution is a great way to get flyers of information into the hands of residents who need the assistance. It is not third-party energy and it is not energy aggregation. So I have to stop and chuckle for just a minute because Mayor asked me to make sure that I told you what was on the next slide. There are no costs to the township and no requirements for you to, for you to do anything. There are automatic savings of 20% for your residents. It's not an opt-out program. In other words, it's not aggregation. It's not, okay, everybody, you're in unless you opt out, and there's no fees or long-term contracts. It's just to reiterate what's on the other slide, but it's very important to know that many townships have had bad experiences with, with particularly energy aggregation, but also third-party energy companies. And this is not that at all. In fact, it's what the state is trying to do to eliminate that problem. These are the projects that Solar Landscape was approved for in the first year. So of the 252 applications that were submitted, 45 were approved and eight of them we, we got with Solar Landscape we were approved for. If you just take a look quickly at some of these pictures, and the first one in Edison, those panels in the middle that are gray was all the power that that building needed to operate. So all of that rooftop was available for additional panels. If you look at the first Pensacola slide, and full disclosure, I was the mayor when they came knocking and said, "We want to do this, bring this new program to Pensacola." I was really very happy when we had some residents complain about the carport panels. So on the outer edges of this building, you see carport panels. Personally, I didn't mind carport panels because I liked the idea of getting out of a car in a hot sunny day and my car would be cool or an umbrella wouldn't be needed when I was first getting out with all my, my work belongings. But the residents didn't want them, so they reduced the size of that project to eliminate the, most of those carport panels. There's still some on the lower, lower side of that slide. And this is the project that we're bringing, that we're hopefully bringing to Parsippany Troy Hills. It is relatively small. There will be more in the future, all over the state, honestly, but this one will power 60 local homes, 30 of which, or 32 of which, I think will need to be low and moderate income households. Again, if you look on the lower building, those gray panels, those are the ones that are there existing now and power that whole facility. So they just needed, in particularly in storage facilities like Cubes, Cube Smart, excuse me, they only need the power for refrigeration or air conditioning to keep things cool and lighting. So if you think about the, the source, the power that we can capture by using rooftops in the state of New Jersey, not, not fields and green spaces, we're just using underutilized space on rooftops. 356 metric tons of carbon dioxide will be prevented from entering the local atmosphere each year just with this one project in Parsippany Troy Hills. If you are part, I'm sorry, I forgot to look this up before I got on tonight. If you are participating in Sustainable Jersey, you'll see that it's a fully endorsed program and you can get 25 points with Sustainable Jersey just for municipal support resolution or a letter of support. We had a ribbon cutting with the Governor on Thursday of last week for this particular site in Perth Amboy. It's two huge buildings, it powers about 1,200 homes. It's, it was the first one from round one to be turned on. So you can't turn on the power to these facilities until you are a certain percentage of completely subscribed. And I believe it's 65% fully subscribed before you flip the switch. Then they'll still be able to subscribe the rest of them. It was a cold day on the rooftop with the Governor, but it was a wonderful day for community solar and, quite honestly, the state. Willa Diaz was mayor when this project was, was started and she got an award with the Housing and Community Development Network of New Jersey. A big part of what Solar Landscape does and other developers may do, but not to my knowledge, quite as innovatively, which is to work to train our young people in a growth industry. So this young man Manny was actually at Edison Job Corps and he was getting his HVAC certification and he, he got interested in what was happening down the hall and, and he decided to check it out. So he now is certified as an energy professional. He is up on the rooftop and he's making prevailing wage, which is $62 an hour. So he can now support his family should his wife need to stop working, raise a family, and it's just a great opportunity for also people who are changing their, the type of work that they do, maybe because their industry has stopped operating. We are also expanding to work with colleges and universities in order to introduce solar as an avenue for career development or further education. We help with the study materials for that certification that Manny got, as well as the fee, the fee for the exam is covered by Solar Landscape. But you can also get tours on the rooftop with the foreman. You can go into the building and understand what it's like to be working in the office around solar energy and get hiring training. We're working also with high schools and VOTEX as well. The, what I like to say is that it certainly brings an equitable distribution of the economic benefits. In other words, everybody can participate. And that wasn't always the case. I like to also say that Solar Landscape is a vertical company in that they will do everything related to the project. The township doesn't have to do it. The property owner isn't doing it. We will maintain that system for the full 20 years and be a good community partner with you in Parsippany Troy Hills. We are, you know, right up against the deadline for our Board of Public Utilities' applications. You know, we're working long into the night and we're just hopeful that perhaps you can consider a letter of support, which would be non-binding in nature, and just say that we've heard about the program. We are, we like the idea of the project site and, and we, you know, we're just happy with the presentation that we received. It's important for the municipal governing bodies to be aware that this is different and to be able to ask questions and be informed. So with that, unless anybody has any slide that you want to see, I can shut this, this presentation down. Not that you really want to see me, but I am available for questions.
I have a couple.
Okay.
First of all, this, this project on the roof, that's, that's great. I think that's a great idea. Whatever resolution we pass, I want to be careful we don't word it so that we're writing a blank check. I have no problem with solar panels on roofs. I would not like to say solar panels, a solar panel farm where they're taking up acreage of grass and trees to put solar panels. So the wording that I would, I would want to see in our resolution would be supporting it on roofs or even the parking. I think the parking was a great idea because that's impervious coverage anyway. And, and the advantages you just pointed out, rain, or snow, or glaring sun, I think that's a great idea. It's impervious coverage. So if we have a resolution, I would like it to specifically say we support it on roofs and on parking lots only. Mayor, if you agree with that, let me know.
If I could just add, Agreed. to know that there are some parking lots that have those solar panels.
Right next to you.
Excuse me?
Right next to you.
Yeah, well, but I'm aware of some other ones where there's issues that, when there's a lot of snow and ice falling off of solar panels onto vehicles, damaging vehicles. So I think we need to, you know, that's, I don't know how much experience you've had with that, but I, I do know firsthand people that have had their vehicles damaged because they parked under there and an ice has slid off the solar panels and then hit their cars.
So in answer to your question, in this round, we are probably applying for upwards of 60 projects and only one of them is going to be a carport or a parking lot array. There are some other considerations that make a parking lot a little bit more challenging than rooftops. Rooptops, once you can get up there and check the condition of the roof and look at planning and zoning requirements for the municipality, you're just, you're just getting up there and putting them on. And they're, they're, they're out of sight and they're, you know, they're easily maintained. I think that, I think that you're right, that's, you know, snow falling off or ice chunks falling off of, of us, of a, you know, a rooftop is challenging enough, but if we put it there intentionally and then it fell on somebody or somebody's car, that would be a challenge. The only other ones that the Board of Public Utilities allows are ones that are on landfills, right? So it's only brownfields or, or landfills or, what's the other thing? Sewer treatment plants, like floating panels on top of that. But Solar Landscape as a company has made, made it their policy and their practice to stick to rooftops. But there will be others who come along and maybe they will have created ways to deal with the question that you, that you, that you bring up, Mr. Creffy.
Thank you.
Some history for the council members and perhaps the Mayor. When Michael Luther was the Mayor, he and Jasmine Lim, who was the BA at that time, came to the council with a proposal to save 10% of the electric bill at the sewer treatment plant if we built a solar farm on Sharky's landfill. Save 10%. I was able to convince them that if we upgrade the sewer treatment plant, we save 75% of our electric bill and have a water plant as opposed to saving 10% and still having a 40-year-old sewer treatment plant. And that's what we did, we moved for the upgrade. But I wouldn't mind if we had some kind of a project now. I don't know what else to do with a landfill. Other than that, you can't build on a landfill.
Right, I mean, that's the reason that, you know, nobody can build there, so why not put panels there? Actually, in Pensacola, the, oh, Pollution Control Financing Authority did help finance the panels that are on that landfill there in Pensacola. That was a few years ago and, and, you know, I was up for one of the ribbon cuttings when they expanded that. And, you know, it's really using overused space, you know, that's available without, without reducing our green space in the state of New Jersey. We need that and, and we want it and, and we're doing damage to our, our environment if we put panels on the green space. So this is an inventive way to, to do this. And, and Deputy Mayor, I, I believe that your criteria on the resolution is no problem whatsoever to write that into the resolution. I know that you can't pass a resolution tonight, but we could ask that a letter says that in the, you know, at the next council meeting, a resolution will be adopted or in the future, you know, it doesn't have to be in your February meeting because we're gonna file all, you know, this application on Friday. So are there any other questions that you might have?
What is the projected life of a solar panel?
20 years, 25 years. The program, it's 20 years.
Okay. So you don't anticipate replacing any of these solar panels?
I'm sorry?
In, in the life of this project in Parsippany, you do not anticipate replacing any of those solar panels during the life of the contract?
I have, and this is Janice McCarthy. Thank you. That was a great presentation. How, how will residents be able to sign up for this? How will you promote this to the residents? Is that something you will do or is that something that happens to the town?
Yes, we do it. Some towns have decided that they will put a link to the web, on the website for it or, you know, because it is an opportunity, honestly, for you to have a press, a press conference that says you brought this to Parsippany, should we be approved for the project, project. And, and we encourage our residents to, to be first come, first served and take, take advantage of this, of these savings. But otherwise, we're going to work with the housing authority and the food distribution sites and, and, you know, bulletin boards, Facebook, ways to just intrigue people to finding out more information about it. It was a huge project. I think we would need to, you know, like Perth and Boy, we do use a, what do you call it? A subscriber company who helps us track the subscriptions because, you know, we have a, a community engagement team who's working lots of different directions at the same time. So they help us to, to compile that information so that we know when we get to the 51%.
So that's 51 or 65? 51% is all you need and that would?
Well, 65 to turn it on, 51% for the low and moderate income families. So sometimes the low and moderate is determined by census tract and, you know, it's a, that they, they usually can tell from a census tract, depending on the size of the city or the town, sometimes those census tracts are, excuse me, indicative of low, moderate income. But then somebody could, on that application, on the subscription, excuse me, check a box that says that I am income qualified and, and allow us to verify that income. Moderate income is, is really, reaches pretty high into our, into our own income levels. And so it does allow a lot of people to participate.
So you figure you get it, there's a lot of success then with, when you start the program and reach out to residents where there's a, there's, there's many people who begin to subscribe to the program? That's, that's great.
Yeah, I can, I can say one thing from the first round that they found out was that the low, lowest income families, because they had maybe a lot to lose if they made a mistake or if they had been scammed at some point by somebody, they were reluctant to sign on. Our, our quota for the 49% filled up right away because people who could read the information and know that they had no contract and no fee, and I'm going to say 20%, it was a no brainer, they signed on. So that's why we need to have the conduit of a trusting organization that they see on a regular basis, be able to tell our low-income families that this is a good deal and you should take advantage of it. The other part that they found out in the pilot for the first year was that two bills had to go. So they did not, they are now for this round requiring the utilities to do bill consolidation. So all of your charges for all of your power is on one bill and the deduction is showing on that one bill. Not another bill comes in the mail and now I'm all confused, you know? They're really learning from the process of the pilot, how to, how to make it a stronger program.
Thank you.
I don't, yeah, thank you. And thank you very much, Mayor, for having me. I will be available for questions via email. I'll send you an email, thank you tomorrow, so that you have the ability to ask me any further questions. And I can even send a draft of a, of a letter that would say, you know, we're intending to pass a resolution, if that's what council decides to do. And that would be what we would include with our application on Friday.
Please send me that draft first thing in the morning.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Yes, have a good night.
Okay, thank you, Betsy, for your presentation.
Okay, just one last thing, again, to reiterate, and thank you to Councilmember Peterson. The trash pickups that were supposed to occur Monday or Tuesday, you're going to have to hold on to it. We're resuming normal operations on Wednesday, so it's the normal schedule for Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Thank you. That concludes my report, clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Moving along to Township Council, I'll turn it over to Council President DePiero.
I have nothing.
I have one thing, Michael, if that's okay.
Sure.
I have been contacted by a few residents who are distraught over the removal of trees along Intervale Road between Intervale and the Water View parking lot. And I am wondering if the town can give some insight into why the trees were removed and going forward, how the now exposed slope is going to be protected from erosion.
Emily, I actually contacted Fred about that.
Okay.
He had gotten back to me. I, I had the same thing. I had a bunch of residents calling me as well.
Yeah. So is Fred, do you have something you could say to the, you know, can you say here what the plan is?
Absolutely. Councilwoman, I can just go over what I told you, sort of expand on what I talked to you about this morning, this afternoon, and what I told Mr. Creepy last week. So we have two issues here, and I reached out to zoning, who's obviously not here, to determine where is this buffer that everybody is talking about? So the Whole Foods development was built a few years ago. There was a buffer of trees to protect the, the view of Whole Foods, the backside of the Whole Foods area in my conversation with Jim Walsh this afternoon. But along Intervale Road, the, so three things are happening on that Intervale roadside. So we had some damage of those trees along that Intervale Road, blocks of those power lines from the hurricane or northeast or whatever from last August. Some damage to some of the ash trees up there there, they're not all ash. And then the power company came through last week under a contractor and then, you know, as, as people said, the wholesale, you know, whacked down the trees and cleared most, a lot of that tree, that brush, you know, to protect their power lines as they're required to do. Not to say that it was good or bad, but they are under a mandate from the state, as we all know, to protect their infrastructure and they have a really tough time with both trying to trim trees and not make it look like they've come through with a lawnmower, but also to protect the power system. Because their failure to do that, there are substantial fines from BPU for failing to protect their infrastructure. I mean, if we remember in August, before I got here, we had a big power thing, we passed a resolution asking JCPenney to harden their infrastructure, do more work. So, you know, this is all part of their, their maintenance. I have to find out, Councilwoman, where is this buffer that the planning board had their approval is? If it's not Intervale and that's, you know, not, nothing we can do about it, then, you know, at the end of the day, then the trees are gone and there's not much we can do about it. That's the conversation I have to have tomorrow with Jen in construction when we pull out the map and the planning board approval with regards to those trees.
I appreciate it. And I think, you know, one of the things that I find extraordinarily frustrating is every time I see a newly planted Bradford pear under power lines because they're fast growing, they drop branches, and they're just a really cheap, terrible tree.
They are absolutely that.
Perhaps planting under power lines, the choice doesn't have to be Bradford pear and oak trees or nothing. Maybe we can look into, encourage a look into low-growth native shrubs, rhododendrons, something that's not going to grow up and compromise the power lines. As someone who lost the contents of their deep freezer over the summer due to a down tree, I am all for maintaining the power grid. However...
Was that a Bradford pear that fell on the power line?
It probably was. I've got their number. But I do think that we could have more than just the dust slope there and that there are low-growth native options that we could investigate putting in. They will cost somebody money, I understand that, but just the thought that maybe that's something that we can initiate.
Any other member from council?
Yes, Councilwoman Gragnani. Councilwoman Gragnani, on January the 19th, the BA Carr sent us a, a letter in regard to the Knoll Country Club and their financial for the year 2020. I want to commend Kevin Brancato and all of his staff. I think this council and this administration made a very wise decision and choice in choosing Kevin Brancato to be a, the general manager. He is a well-respected businessman in Clifton and I think Parsippany did very well in, in appointing him the general manager there. And I too look forward to the grill room being slated. Thank you, Kevin, and all of the workers at the Knoll Country Club.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And also remember on another subsequent email, the Knoll Country Club is the third best golf course in the state of New Jersey, the 33rd ranked nationally. That's just, you know, we got two other losers that we need to bump off the pedestal and then we'll be where we belong.
I just would like to thank Fred, I just want to thank you again. I called you about that issue last week and you got back to me within 30 minutes and had an answer for me. So I just want to thank you for that again.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir.
Any other member from the Township Council?
Councilwoman McCarthy. Mr. Carr, thank you, Fred, for your response on the shops at Smith Road and Brookside Seniors. I have a question on the Smith Road shop, the shops at Smith Road. You know, I understand that the site plan doesn't require trash cans on the property. Is that standard practice for the town to approve site plans for strip malls and not require trash containers on the property? Do you know if that's the case?
I can't adjust that, but in, whether or not we do that, I would defer to, you know, Council President DePiero, who's been there forever, but I've never seen a place where they require trash cans.
In fact, I think, I think I sent you a response on that, Fred, that there is no such requirement on the planning board's part where it gets down to a garbage can, site, a site plan for garbage cans.
Or dumpsters.
Dumpsters, yes, but, but not garbage cans. That's below the level of, of a planning board.
Okay.
That's a health issue. That should be a mandate from some other department, but not the planning board. So when, when, when Jen, and I believe that came from her, said that there was nothing on the site plan, there should not be, and it's a shame on her, she's the one that made that remark.
So she answered the question. I asked her a specific question about, is it required, yes or no, and it's not.
So what's the plan for some, you know, strip mall like the shops that allows the trash to be loaded up in, in the parking lot? And, you know, I've been there and it spreads over to the townhouse, to the median on Smith Road. So what's the responsibility of the property owner to maintain that and ensure that this garbage isn't spreading all around?
In my opinion, it's a health issue.
Well, then, yeah, but how do we resolve that then with this property?
The department should, should fine them for health reasons, just like they do with delis and shops. You have to maintain some standard of health. Well, we could use the property maintenance code. We have a property maintenance code where you have to maintain your properties.
And that's what we did, Council President, Councilwoman, is that we sent the property maintenance person over the, the day after this to speak with the owner about our concerns. I do not believe that I know that he, that he provided a, you know, summons or anything like that, but I will follow up to see what happens after that. But this is a property maintenance issue for the most part, compared with an overflowing dumpster with, you know, restaurant behind a restaurant, you know, sometimes becomes more of a health issue than a property maintenance issue. But I'll follow up tomorrow with Jennifer.
Yeah, you know, I mean, there's, there's like a few, there's a few, there's Jersey Mikes, I think, there's a pizza shop, Dunkin' Donuts, so there's, there's a lot of room for trash, that's for sure. The other issue was when I asked about the seniors at Brookside. My question was really, I was hoping that the township would help advocate for the seniors with the county or the state. You know, I think that seniors overall, not to mention residents, as we discussed before, with disabilities, you know, 80%, I understand from the, from our health commissioner, for the state health commissioner, that 80% of COVID deaths are people 65 and older. So, you know, I was hoping that we could bring attention to this, either to the town, the town council, and we could do more to get them or have them be a priority. You know, I don't know, I, I was thinking of mobile clinics or setting up clinics for them at, you know, sites like the PAL. I mean, I think it's extremely difficult and anyone who has tried to register on these sites or call the call center, it's difficult. And I think, you know, at the community level, we should be providing some assistance to them. So is there any plan for the community to help seniors or those with disabilities?
May I make a suggestion? We're using the Low and Knoll to have COVID tests done. Why can't also, I mean, the, the facility is large enough where we can also bring in our seniors, and I have to agree with you, Janice, absolutely. Why can't we have that facility also partitioned in such, such a way that inoculations can be given to our seniors on a, on a, on a basis? Do Baldwin first and then do, you know, another facility? Perhaps that can be looked into.
Well, it already has, okay? To answer the two council members' questions and inquiry, and I appreciate, I really do appreciate you looking out for seniors on this. The Department of Health, as I mentioned earlier, has reached out to us about a testing site in January and, you know, we would have opened that up Monday, but it's going to open Wednesday. What we are hopeful for here in the township is that there'll be more partnerships with them once this is done. Now, keeping in mind, you can open up as many COVID vaccine sites as you want, but if you don't have the vaccine, it's not going to be much of a place to do. Right now, the only thing we have going is, and this is managed by Morris County, Parsippany does not have the resources to do this yet. The Morris County Health Department is managing a COVID vaccination site at the Rockaway Mall, I believe it's in the Sears parking lot. And they're, they're getting the vaccinations out as quickly as they can get them, but right now, you know, we're still catching up with the backlog because the federal government wasn't getting them to the state of New Jersey fast enough or enough of them. And the state of New Jersey does have the infrastructure, but we need, we need the vaccines. So Parsipony has made it very clear to the State Department of Health that we stand ready, we have the resources, we have the know-how, we have the skills and the talent to help, assist, and host a vaccination site in town. But when the vaccine comes, we'll see what happens on that, but we stand ready. We are ready to run through that.
So there's been some outreach to the county to sort of advocate and prioritize seniors and those with disabilities because, you know, there's some people that can't even leave their homes. So, you know, I just wondered if we were, had a plan in place to help them or reach out to them. I... help them or reach out to them. I actually, you know, I
Right now, again, Janice, this is the, I'm sorry, councilmember McCarthy. This is managed by the county. Okay, I can't, I can't go in as mayor. I let my, you know, opinion known, but I can't go in as mayor and tell a health department what to do. Whether it's my local one to a certain extent, there's there's parameters, there's rule boundaries that I need to stay within, and I certainly can't do it with the county.
Right, I think
I have made it known that, and look, I mean, if we do this, you know, the Noel East was picked because of its proximity to the Noel Senior Center because we were originally looking at the Noel Senior Center. We want to help our seniors here in Parsippany. I mean, that's that's just tradition in Parsippany. We always take care of our seniors. But I can't give a vaccine that I don't have, especially when I don't have control over it.
Right. Well, I think the other problem is is priority, and I think that when they opened it up, it was very broad.
Well, again, yes, and I look, I understand that, but again, I don't have control over that. I can certainly bring your concerns and kick them up if you would like me to.
Yeah, I would. I would. And I would like to get some attention to that because, you know, as the, and I, as the health commissioner said, if 80% of the COVID deaths are people over 65,
Yes.
they certainly should be prioritized in some way. So
I couldn't agree with you more.
Whatever you can do, Mayor, I certainly would, you know, I'd appreciate it as well as everybody else.
Well, you know.
Mayor, if I may?
Sometimes, sometimes, you know, I understood the frustration from council members last meeting, smoking. I mean, you know, I would love the people I care about to that are seniors to get vaccinated as well. I mean, you know, but I'm not going to suggest to them to smoke. It just seems so bizarre that that's the priority, but I, you know.
Thing I'd like to add from the county is that the county facility does not have enough, has not received enough injections to go around. They have a shortage. They can't meet the demand at that facility.
Council member, I just said that. Yes, I agree. They have such a high demand there, but there are not, there are not enough needles to put into people's arms.
Exactly.
Okay, but when that opens up, when that opens up, they will, you know, they're going to look to expand. Rockaway may not be enough. And you know, I, right now, they're vaccinating anyone who's 75 and older, so.
Well, I'm over. I'm over, and I have not been contacted by the county. I'm registered with the county and the state.
Well, again, council member, you probably have more connection with the county than I do. I suggest you reach out.
No, no, no. I registered and I'm waiting my turn.
Okay, good.
But I have not been contacted. I just, for your information, they don't have enough to go around.
Yeah.
Well, I, you know what? Thank you, Mayor, and I understand about the vaccines. You know, I don't think also there's been a lot of outreach from Morris County, and that would be helpful if they did a little more and gave more information. Because I know in Essex County, the county executive there, he has regular calls to their residents about the status of the vaccine and, you know, and I understand, but I, it's noticeable to me that I haven't seen as much outreach from Morris County.
Morris County, I mean, we talk to them on a regular basis. You know, they're in constant communication with my, with the business administrator of the township. But again, to their defense, they can only give out what they have. Right now, they're not getting enough vaccinations, and this is a shortage around the state right now until we can get more of the flu vaccine to give to people.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just talking about information and keep people advised. I think that gives them some more comfort anyhow, but thank you.
No problem. No problem. Remember, we may be the largest town, but we're just one of 39 when it comes to Morris County.
Any any other questions or comments from township council? Okay, seeing none, moving on to township attorney.
I have no report.
Thank you, Jim. Moving on to business administrator, Fred Carr.
Counsel, I have none. I'm going to allow Mr. Beckmeyer to talk about the bio solids in my stead.
Okay, thank you very much for having me. I'm good to see you all. It has been a while. Hope everyone is well.
Whatever microphone you're using, get your mouth closer to it, Joe.
It's in the computer. I'm sorry. I had a problem with the radio this morning.
That's okay. We understand.
Okay, I hope everyone's well and healthy. The Wexford treatment plant produces bio solids or sludge. The greater the volume of the plant, the higher level of treatment the more solid it produces. We're coming up to, we have an advanced Wexford treatment plant.
I really can't hear. Excuse me, I can't really hear.
Yeah, Joe, you're not coming across very clearly.
No, I'm
Yeah, we really can't hear you, Joe.
Okay, I don't know what to do. I'm technologically challenged at times, you know.
This is all IT. If you can give me the presenter, I will put the presenter up.
Okay, go right to to speak back, please.
I'm sorry, did anybody hear that? I can't understand.
Yeah, I can't hear you, Joe.
I don't
Audio.
Joe, I think you just turned it over to me. Good evening, council members. My name is Joe Speesback with Arcadis. Is everyone hearing me well? Okay.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for inviting us to make this presentation this evening. Our presenters are gearing up the, actually, if you can bring it up, that would be fine. I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm with Arcadis. I'm the project principal. About two years or so ago, we were, we were selected to perform a comprehensive biosolids study to look at, you know, the current activities and current practices for biosolids management at the Wexford. But more importantly, to look at all of the various options that are out there for for managing the biosolids, either through reduction or through other utilizations, et cetera. And we have completed that study. It's probably not quite as interesting as the solar study that you had earlier in the evening, but biosolids are important as well. But in any case, we did complete that, and we did make a presentation to the mayor and the business administrator and a few members of of the citizen committee that had been, that Joe had put together here. And we were asked at that point to make this presentation again for the benefit of the council members. So with that in mind, I'm going to introduce our project manager and our project manager, Rob Estopchek. He's out of our Albany office, one of our national experts in biosolids management. He's done projects here in New Jersey as well as up in New York State and around the country. And working with him and also presenting tonight will be Mike Lynch, who was the lead process and lead engineer on this, on this study. And we'll try and be brief, but if the council would like to ask a question at any point on any slide, jump in, or we'll certainly answer any questions at the end. So, Rob, are you, are you ready to take over the presentation?
I think hopefully people can hear me, but I can't share anything right now. So I don't know from the IT perspective if they can give me rights to share.
Well, I think we sent the presentation. Was that able to be brought up by whoever's managing the the meeting? Yes, I made a presenter, but if you want to change it, I can do that.
Can you make me the presenter, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No worries.
And in the meantime, I'll go on mute.
Okay, bear with me a second.
Well, while you're doing that, I was also interested in the discussion about the Noel. I happen to live in Livingston, and I played at the Noel on many, many occasions, very, very often, and it's always been a very enjoyable course. And always good to hear that they're making upgrades over there. The Grill Room probably could use a little bit of an upgrade. But I've enjoyed it, especially the 18th hole, very difficult.
Can everybody see my screen now?
Yes, Rob, we can.
Okay, great. I apologize for a little technical difficulties. We're all working through some stuff. And I apologize right now. If I'm looking over here, I'm not looking out the window. I'm looking at a different monitor. So my, my camera's over here. I'm still trying to figure this out. Jerry, thank you for introducing this, and let's just jump right in. So we're going to talk about biosolids, and biosolids is an interesting topic in that it's the byproduct of wastewater treatment plants, and most treatment plants are really focused at treating wastewater effectively, efficiently, making sure that what they discharge to rivers is compliant. But a lot of times biosolids is kind of a secondary thought. And it's becoming more and more of a tension getter, really because of the solids and the cost of how much it costs to dispose of them. So right now, for the city council's benefit or the town council's benefit, Par Troy really thickens and dewaters raw sludge and sends it to a landfill. It's kind of like the most basic way to treat a biosolids. It's going to Ohio right now. And it's really a cost of $140 per wet ton. And I want to kind of emphasize that number right now because that is probably one of the most riskiest numbers the township faces when it comes to wastewater treatment plant and biosolids. What we're seeing in the industry are a lot of different costs rising. One township in New York State, not too far from the New Jersey border, just recently went out and did some similar and got new prices. They're about $135 per wet ton. But their second low bid was 185. But we're starting to see these prices creep up. We've had two clients in the last year, one being the city of Atlanta. Basically, they're contract haulers in the same arrangement that the township has, cancel their contracts to renegotiate prices. So there's a lot of risk. And as you can see in this picture here, this is just the discharge chute going into the truck where the biosolids are getting hauled off, we're starting to see a lot of aging infrastructure with the township. So what was the goals of the study? One, can we reduce the volume? Because the volume of biosolids really comes down to the costs and mitigation of risk. Can we look at sustainable actions? Are there ways to try to capture the energy associated with biosolids within these technical approaches and treating them? And finally, how do these biosolids and the treatment of them interact with the wastewater side of the plant? Because from a compliance standpoint, from a speedy standpoint, you know, discharging to the river, you know, that's what the township is graded on day in and day out. So how do you merge all those things together? And those are the goals of our project. This is a gravity belt thickener in the picture, and you can see again, a lot of aging infrastructure with this as well. Just want to talk real briefly about our approach. We try to be very collaborative in this effort. We developed a solids and energy flow model because there's a lot of captured energy in biosolids, and there's also a lot of energy required to treat them. So we want to make sure we kind of looked at everything together. So this is a little proprietary spreadsheet. And what we did is we had four different workshops with your staff, really trying to gain their input and how they felt about it from a operation standpoint, from a disposal standpoint, what we could do, what's important. And we looked at a lot of different mass balances and critical infrastructure. And we developed this model which looks at capital costs and also O and M costs, energy, chemicals, all the things you need to spend year in and year out to treat the biosolids. And we try to come up with what we call the annualized cost, which is comprised of the debt service, you know, the construction costs annualized over 20 years with 3% interest. And then also things that are outside the town's control. And we're going to talk about some of the sensitivity that we did when we had these workshops, looking through the different alternatives. Because we don't want to just come up with what's the best alternative today. We want to come up with the best alternative that insulates the township from different, we'll say, variable costs outside of your control, electricity, disposal, stuff like that. Mike, do you want to talk about some of the strategies you came up with? Mike's our lead engineer.
Sure. Thanks, Rob. And thanks to everyone for having us tonight and letting us talk to you guys. So what you're seeing on the screen here, like Jerry and Rob were saying, we looked at a whole number of alternatives, kind of as a, kind of a long list. And from there, kind of working with the plant and Joe, figuring out what's, what are the best options to really dig into? We came up with with these seven, really. So seven different strategies, the first one being kind of the baseline, which is what what the plant's doing today. So that's landfilling of the, landfilling of raw sludge. So we're keeping it in there in these slides just to show you for comparison purposes, but that would be the first kind of alternative is to keep what you're doing. Strategy two, one option we looked at is is continuing basically doing what you're doing in terms of thickening and dewatering, and then bringing that raw sludge over to your neighbor at PBSC and letting them process this sludge through their Zimpro process. And from there, there's kind of beneficial reuse of that sludge after it comes out of that plant. Strategy three was looking at thermal sludge drying, which is kind of a newer technology that's gaining a lot of traction in the US, and it's directly related to what Rob was saying earlier in terms of risk. So what a thermal sludge dryer does is it basically takes raw sludge in. It comes in rather wet, you know, it's something maybe, maybe almost 80% water. And it passes through this dryer, which applies kind of a medium heat that drives off all of the water out of the sludge, and what comes out is essentially 95% dry product, dried cake, rather, that is essentially stabilized. It can be applied on land for agriculture or other purposes. So from there, for that option, that allows the plant to really reduce the amount of volume of sludge leaving the facility, which helps in terms of cost because there's less sludge leaving. So if it has to go to a landfill, there's obviously less of it, but it also opens up the opportunities to go elsewhere, like land application. Strategy three, excuse me, strategy four incorporates the idea of anaerobic digestion and then dewatering and hauling off site. So with anaerobic digestion, what the plant would do is basically take their raw sludge that they kind of don't do anything with now, push it into tanks that anaerobically digest the material, so without the presence of oxygen. They're heated and mixed, and when you get there, it's just an anaerobic reaction that reduces the mass of sludge going through the plant. But then it also has benefits like producing biogas that would come off of that tank. And the biogas, something about, I think, Rob, 60% methane. And the good thing with, obviously, with the methane content, it can be used, you know, essentially a co-gen system to create electricity that can be used, you know, either if you have enough of it to give it back to the grid or use it at the plant to kind of pay for the operations of the facility. Strategy five was kind of meshing together strategy four and strategy three. So basically anaerobic digestion of sludge and then dewatering it to get the water out, and then pushing it through a thermal sludge drying system again. And this option really is kind of the most, most volume reduction you're going to see. You get a good, a good mass reduction within the anaerobic digester through dewatering and then add on the thermal sludge dryer, and that kind of improves that even even further. One thing we looked at quickly was strategy six. which is anaerobic digestion and dewatering and something that I think the township was interested, was interested in was onsite composting. So the idea here would be essentially a large composting facility that would bring in material from offsite that would then be mixed with the anaerobically digested and dewatered sludge, composted onsite and then, you know, used elsewhere. And then strategy seven was essentially incineration of raw sludge. So that's something that the township used to do at the plant that, that is no longer in operation, but it's something we, we consider in terms of getting it back and running, dealing with the permits and everything and using that as a long-term kind of solution. So a few of these, Rob's playing with the animations here, Rob, you can go through all of them. We got rid of essentially three of them that didn't make a whole lot of sense. Incinerating raw sludge, just a lot of permit issues and just really not sustainable and a lot of cost involved. Strategy six in terms of onsite composting sounded really nice, but the cost and the huge amount of footprint on the site that would be required to operate this system, as well as the extra, I think, labor and operations kind of complexity kind of led us to kind of scratch that off the list. And again, like I said earlier, strategy one was a baseline that Rob's going to talk through kind of some of the costs that we kept in there for comparison, but it's something we didn't want to recommend moving forward as a, as kind of a long-term approach.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. And I used to be a board member for a 40 MGD wastewater treatment plant. So one thing I just want to point out is strategy seven, the incineration. I mean, one might ask, hey, we have incinerators there. How does that drop off the table so fast? And it really comes down to the amount of sludge that you're producing right now relative to maintenance and operation of the incinerators. Those incinerators, they got to stay hot, but not like a operation where you can turn them on and off like a light switch. So when you have sludge going in, you're adding oil or natural gas to heat it up and burn the sludge. But on the days that you're not burning sludge, which would probably be somewhere between four to five of them, you'd only burn sludge two of them, you're actually spending a lot of energy in order to keep that box hot and ready to go. So from an O and M standpoint, it didn't pencil out and didn't make it to the next level of analysis that we're going to get to right now. So we're kind of going to jump to conclusion a little bit. And, and the conclusion is a little bit fuzzy because I've always said that biosolids, you can do different ways, probably 50 different ways. Ten are absolutely fantastic and economically right. Three are perfect for your community. And when we look at this slide, this talks about the five strategies at this point. Baseline, one, we're not recommending it, but it's kind of like just a, a reference point to how much the township is spending right now. Right? And the $5.6 million we're showing up on the slide is what would need to be invested into that system today in order to maintain that for the next 20 years. And then $3.4 million in O and M is really the cost of chemicals, power and disposal. And that comes up to the last column, annualized yearly cost. And I think that's the most important column that everybody should be looking at. So right now, the township is spending about $3.8 million a year if they reinvested in a current system. Okay? So that, that includes a 3% bond of that $5.6 million. The next thing is hauling to PVSC. Very little capital involved with this, $1.6 million. And what it would entail is basically taking the liquid sludge and turning around truck after truck after truck and getting them over to PVSC. And it's a pretty expensive O and M perspective as far as the amount of hauling and disposal costs that go with that at 3. almost $2 million per year, all in. It also increases the truck traffic in an area where you've got Morris County and garbage. You've got the treatment plant itself, you know, it's nice that it's close to the highway, but there is a lot of truck traffic right there right now. So that's one of the drawbacks to that. Then we get into thermal drying of the raw sludge. And this creates a Class A biosolid which could be utilized on non-food production facilities for like, say golf courses, stuff like that. But when you have a stabilized sludge with thermal drying that's not digested first, sometimes it can be odorous. And some of the places where you can send it to are not really great. So I want to put that in people's minds and there's questions about strategy three. Because we have a big jump, you know, from the first two when we're talking five and a half million, just under $2 million for capital. Now we're boom, $22 million, right, in round figures. But if you look at the O and M per year, and that's really driven by the disposal cost, it drops down. And it's actually cheaper than what the township's doing now with the O and M plus the capital debt service. We go further and we say digestion with some high-strength waste bringing in for revenue and producing electricity with combined heat and power. It's just under the 20 million at about $18 million, $2 million in annual O and M. And it's just a little bit more than the $3 million we showed for strategy three. You know, at this level, all of those numbers right there are pretty close. Strategy five, the highest capital cost at just under $27 million, which is a lot of money. I understand that. Also produces the least amount of O and M per year when with electricity, cost of natural gas and most importantly, disposal costs because we're drying it and we're using that digester gas to fuel the dryer. So that's actually just under $3 million as well. So strategies three and five, anything with dryers come out to be about the same cost per year. Now it comes down to, we'll say, sensitivity. And these are some of the things we did with your staff at the wastewater treatment plant with this energy and flow model. And we did it in real time, you know, we showed them, okay, here is your baseline. So this graph right here shows those five options. The orange on the bottom is the capital cost as far as what the debt service would be over 20 years with a 3% interest rate. And you can see the first two were the very small capital costs. You can see them small on the bottom. The last three go up and are much more capital intensive. But the blue bars in the middle is the disposal cost. So the disposal cost is very high for the first two options, which is offset by the amount of capital the township would spend for the next two. And with the dryers, you can see that the disposal costs are somewhere between 12 and 16%. And really the difference between options three and five is that option three, dryer only, we're putting in sludge that's coming off your system right into the dryer. Whereas option five, when we digest the sludge, we reduce the volume by about 60% with the volatile solids and we're cooping that gas to feed the dryer. So that's why there's actually less sludge in, in option five. And then you can see, what does it cost to run the system? The gray bars at the top are chemicals, are electricity, are gas. And there's very little O and M when it comes to land selling it right now or sending it to PVSC as sludge. But we have less total annualized costs when you add everything up for the next two options, even though there's more electricity or natural gas associated with that. Our next evaluation is really looking at the five options and saying, okay, what happens if things outside of the township's control change? Electricity is being one of them. Electricity's been pretty stable recently, but we want to say, you know, what does each solution do if electricity changes? So what we did is we varied it, two cents based on the average. Right now, the township's paying about eight cents per kilowatt hour down at its treatment plant. And we took each solution and said, okay, if we change the electricity, what happens to each model? Well, the gray bars where we're very low intensive in O and M, there's very little change for the first two. They're pretty level. We like that. That's, that's resilient to that option. Dryer only, it is fairly energy intensive. So you can see it going up a lot steeper. With the digester and combined heat and power, because the township would be making electricity in that option, the value of the energy the township would make would actually go up. So over time, if energy increased, the amount of operation costs would go down. So that's kind of exciting. And then finally, digester and dryer, again, small, incremental, generally flat. But the big driver that we feel is out there is the cost of disposal that we're seeing right now. And what we did is we did a little bigger swing based on some of the low bids versus second bids that we're seeing. Like I talked about town of Wallkill getting a buck, 135 buck to 185 between the first and second bids for that. So we varied it for each of these things. So landfill, you can see if there is a big swing either up or down in disposal cost, which honestly, I don't see down anywhere in the cards in the future relative to what's going on with the regulations. That's a very, very steep rise. Same thing with PVSC. If the disposal costs go up significantly, again, very uninsulated from those drivers. However, the last three that are a little bit more capital intensive, we can see that they are a lot more insulated from the change in disposal costs over time. The two dryer options, because we are drying it to about 95%, are very, very level. So they give you a lot of insulation to that, we'll say, variable cost externally. With the digester and no dryer, that's the fourth option as we're going towards the right side of the presentation. It does go up a little bit more steeper, but still not as much as the other ones. We also looked at greenhouse gases and we had a great presentation on solar earlier. And what we did is we benchmarked the wastewater treatment plant for just the biosolids only. So this is not the entire system, all the electricity. This is just the solids handling process. And currently, driving solids to a landfill or sending it on a train, you know, we're looking at, this is times 100, so that's 22,000 metric tons of CO2 equivalents per year. Hauling it to PVC because it's a much shorter distance is a lot less. So there would be a greenhouse gas improvement if that solution was enacted. Just putting in a dryer of unstabilized sludge, there's a big need for natural gas to drive off the amount of water we're talking about, 80% water in that sludge. So that would actually be a net loss or increase, I should say really, of greenhouse gases. And you basically double the amount of greenhouse gas emissions from this process. With a digester and combined heat and power because you're producing electricity, we look at what the equivalent carbon dioxide metrics are for Parsippany Troy Hills. And we say, okay, for every kilowatt hour we put out or we produce, that's actually taken that many metric tons of carbon off the grid and it would be a net benefit and a big net benefit, about 52 metric tons times 100 per year. And then finally, if we look at the dryer plus digestion, really we see a small gain, you know, in the amount of carbon emissions. So, so it is positive from a greenhouse gas standpoint. It doesn't get negative. You know, we don't make enough gas to quite get to that point where it's just producing itself, but it could get there over time. So that's positive. So going back, just kind of reiterating where we're at, is baseline, right now, what the township is doing with what we think the improvements are to the infrastructure to maintain that long-term, 3.8 million dollars per year, looking at that last column, annualized cost. I focus on strategies three and five. Both would be a net savings to the township. With really number five being a net savings to the township in cost, being very insulated from both disposal costs, electricity costs, natural gas costs, and also a net benefit for greenhouse gases. So with that, what we would recommend that township really consider if they were to go forward with the biosolids project is implementation of anaerobic digestion and thermal sludge drying. It is the highest capital cost, I understand that, and sometimes you have to have a little bit of an appetite for that. But I also like to really look at, what does it cost me all in beyond just the capital? What am I spending every year on top of that? When we look at the annualized cost, it really comes down to the annualized, the lowest annualized cost. And it's the most insulated from external variables as far as electricity and disposal. On top of that, it is a net savings in greenhouse gas emissions. So, so it's kind of like checking all the boxes that we were looking at as far as the project goals. It does produce a Class A biosolids. And with digestion in front of drying, those biosolids are usually a lot more marketable. So those are all exciting things. And with that, we'd like to open it up to questions.
What I'll also say is, council members, we've given you a lot of information and the presentation will be made available to you so that you don't have to think that we, we won't show those various, you know, charts and graphs because there was a lot of information there. But I think what Rob was trying to say, and we'll have the open discussion now, was that we looked at it, when I started saying we took a comprehensive look, I think we did. We looked at all the various options, the do nothing option to the most straightforward, which is just, you know, benefits from the economies of scale, if you will, of what PVSC is doing. They've got a huge plant and right now they're taking in, you know, fairly high, you know, or meaning low solids content material because they have the infrastructure already in place and they combine that. So there is that benefit. But I think the thing that struck me throughout this whole evaluation was how much control do you want to keep of your future and disposal costs are rising? Incineration has already gone to the point where they're not, people aren't building new incinerators anymore. It's not the environmental friendly way to go and it's energy intensive. We're not that much of a net gain. So incineration as a solo option, and Rob, I think you'll agree, is really out of favor these days. So we wanted to look at the various other combinations and the ability to, you know, chart your own destiny going forward, which is one of the reasons we were gravitating towards the net benefit, although it does have higher capital costs of, of the digester option that Rob was laying out. However, we're just consultants. Ultimately, the town has other issues, capital cost not being it, but it's a tremendous time to take on debt when one thinks about the very characteristically low borrowing rates that we're in right now. And these kind of projects are still available through the state, you know, revolving fund for very, very low interest financing over a period of time. So we wanted to look and, and Rob, I think you did a wonderful job of trying to focus on total, total lifecycle costs, annualized costs, just to help the council, see what the options are and engage the conversation that says, what's the best option for Parsippany Troy Hills? But I hope you have questions.
Any questions from council at this time?
I have a question.
I have one, I just wanted to say, it takes an engineer to say, use the word excitement and biosolids in the same sentence.
Well, to us, they're exciting. They are.
Years ago, one of the options was called ash to glass.
Yes, I'm familiar.
And the glass is inert, toxins are not an issue and the glass can be used for a multitude of purposes. What happened to that option?
Energy, incredibly energy intensive, councilman, incredibly. As a matter of fact, I'll, I'll just step back, we were talking about PVSC. We, as Arcadis, we helped PVSC back in the mid to late 90s actually look at the various options for getting into the privatization, if you will, of their biosolids. And we looked at, and the way they accomplished that was to look at And we looked at, and the way they accomplished that was to look at all technologies out there, vitrification, landfilling, gasification, I mean, the list goes on and on ultimately. And yes, vitrification, which is what you're referring to, was one of the options, but it quickly fell off the table as being not a long-term solution, very, very energy intensive. And then there's always, what do you do with the glass? At the end of the day, you wind up putting it in a landfill somewhere, because there aren't that many markets for it. But Rob, you're probably more familiar, I'm just talking to PVSC, but if you want to answer on that answer.
Yeah, I mean, some of the drivers that we're seeing out there with emerging contaminants, we didn't really touch on that today. But I think PFOS is at the top of everybody's mind and a couple different contaminants out there. And how do you insulate yourself for that? And even if you have a Class A biosolid now that can be used for land application, it may not be that way in the future with regulations. We are concerned about that. There's no regulation that would say the material that Parsipony Troy Hills would make would qualify and be excluded from a Class A. But there's contaminants that we're learning that are kind of coming out as the science evolves, you know, again, PFOS being the issue. Taking PFOS as the case, that actually gets driven off in a thermal process, so we don't have worries about that here. But let's just say something was in that sludge that no one knew about, and all of a sudden, it can't go for a beneficial use, and like overnight, it's got to go to a landfill. That's why dryers are really becoming the more vogue, we'll say, option. Because if there was a, a, a big change in the market overnight, you'd actually have a very low volume of material to get rid of. And again, you know, vitrification, gasification, paralysis, some of these things that are out there, they just haven't penciled out really in any place in a practical standpoint as of yet.
Okay, one more question then.
Yep, yep.
Ash to glasses out. Contaminants in the ash. There's, landfills are getting more and more restrictive on what they will take. And if there are contaminants in there, you're trucking further and further away. In this drying process that you're proposing, does that mitigate contaminants and take that issue off the board?
Great question. Some of them, yes. All of them, no. But what it does do, it makes the volume much more smaller, such that if had to go to a specialized landfill, it would insulate you from that cost as well. But right now, there's nothing in the biosolids that we were concerned about that would say that. Again, this is all talking about emerging contaminants in the future. Something emerged that said it can't go to be a Class A biosolid, and had to go to a landfill, and it can't go to a regular landfill, and had to go to hazardous landfill. Again, you want the smallest volume possible for that kind of option, and that's what we showed with the
Well, turn it in five.
Increase in disposal, yeah, steep increase in, in both the dryers. They're very level. If I can go backwards in our presentation, both of the dryer options are very level in the sensitivity to disposal costs. So if you had something that said it had to go to, you know, a hazardous waste landfill where you're paying a little bit more, again, really, it doesn't, it doesn't change the township's outlook that bad with a dryer, because you are drying it to ninety-five percent dry, whereas right now, going to landfill, you know, at twenty percent solids, eighty percent of that is water that's getting landfillled. So hopefully, that answers the question.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and Rob, I think the councilman, the councilman was referring to what's typically an incinerator ass, which is the heavy metals and cadmiums and things that, you know, are actually always going to be there, even after you go through a thermal process, and you probably experienced that previously when they were incinerating sludge, and that there was, you know, a concern about the heavy metals in the, in the ash.
Any other questions from council?
Yeah, I, I guess the focus, this is Councilwoman McCarthy, I guess the focus here is on disposable costs, because they're the variable costs, is that right?
That's one of them. We looked at electricity, natural gas, electric, and disposal, one of the three things we really looked at and had the most change in prices. But disposal is really the one that we're seeing is the biggest jump between what you're paying now and what you could be paying in the future. Electricity and natural gas kind of stabilized, if not gone down a little bit over the last ten years. So that's kind of stabilized. Obviously, politics and where things are going, that might change a little bit, but the disposal costs are really what's on everybody's mind today. And that's because of ocean dumping that a lot of New York City and some parts of New Jersey did years ago, and all those contracts, and that went away, they're expiring. Everybody's looking for new outlets right now, where to go with it.
So this is the best option also for the greenhouse gases? Wasn't the digester the lowest?
Great, great question. So, so this is the slide, we talked about greenhouse gases. The last two both have digesters on them. And as you can see, other than hauling to PVSC, which is, you're kind of putting all your eggs in one basket, taking your sludge to one place, not doing anything with it, that is the lowest, because all you're doing is the greenhouse gases emitting on a truck going from Parsipony down to where it's being disposed of at Passaic Valley. Whereas with a digester, option four, we see it going negative thirty, that's because in that option, we're producing electricity to offset what the plant is currently buying, and that's why there's a negative there. Whereas numbers, the, the fifth one, where we're saying seventeen, which is just a little bit less as far as metric tons pursuant to what the township's doing now, so that's a net benefit, it is a net benefit. We still need to add some natural gas to that over time in order to get to the dryness that we're talking about. But they're both more green than what the township's doing now.
Right, right. And I do agree that if you're going to do an infrastructure now with the rates, would be the time to do it. I mean, they're cheap rates. So, I mean, it would make sense to take the best option at the lower rate for, for the future, forecasting the future.
Yeah, and, and it all comes down to, you know, greenhouse gases versus sensitivity to disposal cost. As you can see, digester only, it does, it is more sensitive to disposal, whereas the two drier options are less. You know, with electricity, digesters with CHP actually gains over time. So it comes down to, okay, and none of us have crystal balls, because none of us are retired, I don't know who's retired, I can say that, I'm still working. So, can't really predict the future that well. I can just, can tell you what we're seeing in the last couple of years, and disposal cost seems to be what's driving decisions right now.
Yeah, and I would agree with that, because I, I work primarily for municipal plans throughout New Jersey, and a number of years ago, especially during Sandy, we had a big problem with the, where does the sludge go? You know, PVSC was down, and the rest of the state was starting to happen. But having helped PVSC, we also recently helped them on a twenty-year renewal. And what we were finding is that when these contracts were first let out, it was going for Zimpro heat treatment and then land application. And many of them were beneficial use applications. But the beneficial use applications were going down, and they were becoming harder and harder to find, and it was starting to become landfill. And even landfill space right now is starting to be at a bit of a premium. So when I think in terms of this, I look at disposal, whether it be even beneficial use or landfill, as an unpredictable cost, I guess is the best way to say. But it seems to be significantly on, more unpredictable than some of the other factors that we were considering.
So some of the municipalities that you've engaged with find, have chosen that option?
I'm sorry, you broke up a little bit on my end.
Yeah, the municipalities that you've been engaged with have, have used that strategy and been successful with it?
Yeah, we've done several studies recently. We've been engaged by a few of them to keep continuing on the design phase right now. And anaerobic digestion and thermal drying seems to be the best option for plants, say, over ten MGD. It comes down to economy of scale and how much sludge that you produce. You know, there's certain plants that are smaller that we would not come up with the same recommendation from a cost standpoint, because the capital then becomes too large relative to the disposal sensitivity. Whereas here, you know, the capital versus disposal works out well.
Okay, so this is more focused toward Parsipony then, this option?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, well, thank you, I appreciate it, it was a good, good presentation, thank you.
I have a question for administration. Strategy number five has a humongous capital expenditure. Would that require us at this point in time to increase our sewer rates? Don't answer it once.
So, I'll answer that question. This, this is the question of, I don't know, honestly, okay?
Before we make an intelligent decision, I'd like to have that answered. We don't, we don't need it tonight.
Well, absolutely. The, the conversation is that if we choose one or the other, how we're going to pay for it is a critical part of the conversation. But, you know, we haven't got the, we haven't done that part of the conversation yet, because we're still in the options phase. And, you know, as far as Juan and myself and the mayor and administration, you know, frankly, we're still working on getting the council the budget for this year as our priority. And this is in the out years for that conversation. So, but absolutely, we get that conversation. That would be an integral part of the, the recommendation of the administration, say, we think you should go to option five, and this is what it's going to cost annualized over the next few years, and this is how it's going to impact your rates or not.
Okay.
All right, thank you guys for your presentation. Moving along to township clerk, I don't have a report, and township office and committees, I'm assuming there's no report there either?
Not at this time.
Okay, going on to the engineering report, I'm going to go ahead and read it into the record. The project, Green Bank Road Safety and Improvements Project, the project's complete except for the guardrail replacement, coordination with the underground utility companies ongoing. The new guardrail, guide, gilderail will be installed once underground utilities are moved, no council action required. Simpson Avenue retaining wall project. Simpson Avenue retaining wall project is nearing completion. The project will be completed in a few weeks once the fence is installed, no council action required. Veterans Park Culver replacement project. Construction started on the Veterans Park Culver replacement project. Work is anticipated to continue through the winter, and the park will reopen in the spring, no council action required. Mount Tabor Street Improvement Project, Phase Five, work on the Mount Tabor Street Improvement, Phase Five project has stopped due to weather. Construction will start again in the spring once we have more favorable weather, no council action required. Road Design Projects, the following projects are in final design, and we anticipate bidding and awarding as follows. Edwards Road Improvements, March 2021. Mount Tabor Street Improvements, Phase Six, March 2021. Various Culver Repair Project, April 2021. Twenty twenty-one Road Resurfacing and Sidewalk Repair Project, April 2021. Baldwin Road Pedestrian Accessibility Improvements, April 2020, twenty, twenty twenty-one. Putting Stone Heights Road Improvements, May 2021. These projects will be constructed this year, no council action required. Community Rating Systems, CRS Program. We continue to work with our consultant and the NJDEP to get back into the CRS program. This program provides discounts on flood insurance, policies based on the level of activities in which the township participates. The work will continue through at least the end of the, of the year, no council action required. Performance Bond Release, Parsipony Hanover Realty, two LLC, Block 202, Lot 6.04. The developer completed all site work in accordance with the approved plans. Inspections were made during the course of construction, and this office has no objection to the release of performance surety bond number 106960288. A resolution will need to be adopted by the Township Council. NJDOT Jurisdictional Agreement, Waterview Boulevard Resurfacing. NJDOT, the Township of Parsipony Troy Hills and the Township of Troy Hills each have jurisdiction over a travel lane of the Waterview Boulevard Jug Handle around Post Office property. As part of the NJDOT maintenance operations, all lanes of the Jug Handle will resurface with the understanding that the township would reimburse the state for the cost of our lane. A resolution will need to be adopted by the Township Council authorizing this agreement. There is no correspondence. Moving on to bids, taken January 28th, 2021, while fourteen, emergency generator. February 10th, 2021, Lick Howl Off the Water Main Replacement, Phase One Rebid, to be taken February 4th, 2021, one new twenty, twenty-one Chastity Cab, twenty-two thousand pound GVW with crane reinforced utility service body. February 11th, 2021, one new twenty twenty-one Deuce and Portable Power Air Compressor with running gear and accessories for Parks and Forestry. March 4th, 2021, Baldwin Road Sanitary Sewer Magnifications, quotations, quotations proposal qualifications, none. Moving on to the public hearing, I'd like to entertain a motion to open up the public hearing, please.
Motion?
Thank you. Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Mr. Carriffy. Welcome, Mr. Carriffy.
Yes.
De Nani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, going to open up the floor to the public. Just want to remind the public, you can speak on any matter, you will have five, five minutes to speak. This will not be a conversation or a question and answer. You can speak, and the council administration can then address your questions or concerns. With that being said, we're going to go ahead and look to see if we have any participants. Okay, all right, we have a Bob and Pat Benexia, can we unmute them, please? Hello?
Hi.
Hey, Bob, you got five minutes.
Okay, this is going to be real quick tonight, I just have one quick question. In this year's projected budget, approximately how much money is scheduled to be transferred from the utility budgets to the general budget? That's it.
Bob, thank you for your question, let's go ahead and mute Bob, if we can turn that over to the administration or council for an answer. Fred, Juan, go ahead.
I'll ask that. Bob, Pat, so that's the same question you asked about a month ago, and the answer's still the same, we have not made that determination.
Thank you, Fred. Moving along, I see a Nick Homiak, let's go ahead and unmute Nick, please. Nick, you're unmuted.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. This sort thing sounds great, and maybe there is something good in the future, it's called the Green New Deal. And instead of subsidizing all these fossil fuel corporations with the, the American tax dollar, we're going to start a new, a new phase. So it may not cost as much as you think right now. And I would also think the seventy-one dollars that we just got as an increase in its accumulative impact, and even with the low interest loans, probably will take care of the, the problem. I'd like to say something about the, I just, I had an experience up at the Knoll, and I, I asked that a meeting could take place. According to the, the Knoll Committee, it's supposed to be a voice of the public pertaining to planning, budget, and regulations. And I submitted eight subjects of discussion. Never got an answer from anybody. And lo and behold, I found out that I was going too far, and I thought I was some kind of a boss, which I found bizarre, because I care about the place. And the reaction I got from the, the manager up there, and it's not a business, it's a public utility, really kind of surprised me. And I was told in, a few words said, I wasn't welcomed walking around up there. Now, in the winter months, everybody walks around up there. I use that landscape at times in the winter when I don't want to get in my car and drive somewhere, and I walk around the perimeter of the golf course, and I look for trash. I've also adopted, there's three hundred and thirty-five point five eight acres of the golf course, but there's an additional twenty-five acres of the river sensitive area. And Knoll claims to have three hundred and sixty acres of beautiful woods. Well, I've adopted those woods in about 2014, and I cleaned them up. And let me tell you, nobody was doing anything down there, it was a mess. It took me four eight-hour days just to get it manageable from the, the trash down there. So to be told that I wasn't welcomed because there's some photographs I sent. The photographs I sent were to show, look what's going on here, we can do better than this. And that was what my eight, uh, subjects of discussion were. Now, they didn't have to jump and have the meeting right away, but when you don't get any feedback and, uh, you know, before, uh, Keith Kazimar and Osnner didn't have any problem having a meeting, me and, uh, Kandowski and all, and it was agreed that they were going to go green, environmental friendly. All of a sudden, everything changed. So I wanted to make sure that, you know, everything that was agreed on before was still going to happen. It was hinted at, but the meeting would have brought it out. And like I said, I'm not anybody's boss and I didn't go too far. But I think the people at Knoll went too far by telling me, you're not welcome walking around up there and you might wind up with a fine or something, which was really insulting and inappropriate. So, and, uh, Knoll would have a long way to go because one of the best golf courses here in the state is called Hawk Point. It's in Hunterton County and they are environmental friendly and they get awards from the, uh, the Highlands.
30 seconds, Nick.
All right, I'll, I'll, uh, I'll leave it at that and, uh, let's look forward to the Green New Deal.
All right, thank you, Nick, uh, let's go ahead and mute Nick.
Well, do we have an answer to that? I mean, is Nick welcome then or not? You know, how do we, you know, not allow someone to, um, go to the golf course? No one? Can we find out?
I will address that. I think, Nick, what we're talking about is that Kevin asked you to leave because you're down by the clubhouse, which was at that time under renovation and you don't need to be talking to the contractors who are doing the renovations and walking around the clubhouse that's being renovated. Yes or no? So, Janice, uh, McCrump, Councilwoman McCrump, yes, we've all gotten a copy of Nick's Concerns and, uh, the biggest concern, it's not about walking around on the path. Uh, Kevin's concern was walking around by the clubhouse in the midst of the renovation, not appropriate.
Well, that wasn't specific, so maybe if that's the case.
Then, yes, uh, yes, that, that, that was the issue. If somebody's out at the other end of the golf course, you know, at the end of the day, it is a public utility. It is, it is maintained by the golf staff and we routinely chase off golfers and people all the time who are out there in a closed area. I mean, they're not supposed to be playing golf in July. You know, and there's a difference between, you know, just going for a walk real quick, maybe along the path or picking up some trash and then hanging out by the clubhouse, talking to the contractor.
All right, well, I just think that should be specified, that in fact, he's what.
I don't want to get, you know, you know, you brought it up, so I'm forced to answer the question.
Right. Thank you.
All right, uh, let's see if there's any other member of the public. Okay, uh, seeing none, can I get a motion to close the public session, please?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. Peterson, roll call, Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Ms. De Nani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to ordinances, just take a second to review the ordinances, they're not to be voted on this meeting, but the next meeting.
Question on number one. Is there any cost dis-easement that we're approving? That's A1.
Turn that over to the administration.
No, sir.
No cost, okay, thank you.
Now, this is just a, we already let the contract to bid for this during a previous meeting. This is the easement, allowing them to do the, the work that we're asking them to do.
Okay.
Okay, uh, moving along to the non-consent agenda. Uh, resolutions are 2021-32, supporting a community solar project in the municipality. And I have a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Who made the motion?
McCarthy.
Okay, motion made by Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Ms. De Nani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, moving along to the consent agenda, just take a second to review those. Okay, seeing no questions, we're going to move along to the, um, approval of the payroll and bills list. CFO Juan Arribas recommends authorization for payment. Uh, one authorized payment of the February 5th, 2021 regular payroll estimated at $1.6 million. Number two, payment of bills from voucher list of February 1st, 2021 through February 3rd. Estimated total, $777,292.59. Going to have a motion to approve the authorization, please.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. De Nani, roll call, Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Ms. De Nani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, now we're going to move along to the.
If you don't mind, I'd like to go back to the consent agenda.
Sure, absolutely, Council President.
Item 82, the, the major soil moving permit for Laninex. It's, it's appropriate for the, since we approve soil moving permits, it's appropriate for the council to discuss, um.
Timing.
Timing and where, what route the trucks are going to take. Now, this is Laninex Plaza. Um, we're swimming the, and, and Parcipony Road is a very, very heavy traveled road, especially during commuter times, uh, and we have school buses going past there too. So I think we should be concerned about the times we allow trucks to travel, uh, on Parcipony Road and, and make sure that they travel towards 287 or Route 10, not on Littleton Road where we have several schools and school traffic. So if I, if I can suggest, um, maybe no early than 10:00 AM to 2:30 PM before schools get out, uh, as, as timing for the trucks and that they can only travel, um, on Parcipony Road towards, is that south, towards 287 and not get on Littleton Road. Anybody disagree with that?
Council President, uh, if I may, uh, there is a, uh, memo from the engineer on that. I'm going to add that to his, uh, his, uh, if you will, item number five on the engineering report with regards to, um, the major soil removing permit, I'm just trying to get this done. So, Parcipony Road South, the 287, not before 10, 10:00 AM. And what was the third thing you'd like me to pass on to Justice?
Uh, between 10:00 AM and, uh, 2:30 PM before school lets out.
When we're doing school time, also only those two items then?
Yes.
We can.
I don't know if this is relevant, but for as long as we have the COVID school schedule, school's letting out at 1 o'clock. And the kids do their second half of their day at home as virtual learning.
Yeah, I don't know where we're going to, I don't know how we do this then. We can't just lump them between 10 and 12.
I mean, I run on that road every day and take my life in my hands, so any, any limitation is good with me.
I also need to check and see whether or not we have the authority to, uh, limit traffic on public streets in, in accordance with, uh, with the time limits that were just, uh, suggested. I, I can check on that tomorrow.
Well, my, my lawyer hat tells me that, uh, we have been, um, limiting on soil moving permits before we approve them. We have been mandating direction and times of, for the past 36 years. So, um, don't spend too much time on it, uh.
Well, you may, you may be able to do that on municipal streets. I believe that Parcipony Road here is a county highway.
We had a soil moving permit for our property for a berm built. And if I remember correctly, we were limited on Parcipony Road with time and direction of the trucks coming to move the gra, the, the earth.
And the township did the limitation.
I believe that was part of the permitting, yeah. I can, my mother-in-law will know, I can find out if it's.
I'm sure.
I'll check on that tomorrow.
All right, um, any other questions? All right, seeing none, we're going to go, uh, to the executive session, um. Mr. Lot, do we expect any action? I don't anticipate any action being taken, is that correct?
I'm not anticipating any action by council.
Okay, so, uh, for the public, if you guys would like to log off, you can. Uh, I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution, we're going to go into executive session. Um, resolution, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances. Whereas the Township Council is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist. And whereas the Township Council wishes to discuss attorney-client privileged information regarding the PVA. And whereas minutes will be kept and once the matter involving the potential of the above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be resolved by the Township Council, the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, if the public be excluded from this meeting. May I please have a motion to adjourn into closed session?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. Peterson, roll call, Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Ms. De Nani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Okay, if we can go ahead and go into closed session, please, at this point. Uh, can I please have a motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. McCarthy, roll call, Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Ms. De Nani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Okay, we are now adjourned, thank you everyone, and thank you to the public, everyone have a great night.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.